Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the Rockingham County Board of Commissioners meeting of August twenty second, two thousand and twenty four. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We are a hundred percent attendance today. Uh, we have three commissioners, Commissioner Chercello.
Afternoon.
Commissioner Coyle.
Hello, everyone.
And myself, Commissioner Godu. I'd like to uh go off the agenda for a moment for a little bit of housekeeping. Uh, and uh, we vacated the chair. Couple of meetings ago, and uh, it seems that we should have a formal vote to uh, vote. For uh, to elect the chair, so I entertain a motion to on that subject.
At this point, um, I'm just gonna intervene for a minute. I don't think, I think, given the circumstances of the election, I think that you are serving in the role of acting chair. I think Commissioner Chercello affirmed that at that meeting, but I don't think that we should indulge a vote, a formal vote until after the election. I think that's the appropriate remedy, just because we don't. I, so.
I, and I'm, I'm, I'm fine with that. I, it just, it was brought to my attention that I'm not chair. Uh, and I don't want there to be any question about who needs to sign what paperwork or or any other formalities. I'm perfectly content with uh, being acting chair if that's what the board thinks we should do.
Well, I, I think that that correction was made, uh, and Commissioner Coyle was right by making it acting, because you would be acting when there's no chair. So you'd be in that, in that spot. So, I mean, I can go either way, whatever you guys wanna do. If you wanted to choose somebody new, that's fine. Uh, or you can wait, I don't know.
Okay, well, we'll leave it as acting chair then. All right, we'll begin with uh.
If you just, um, I, it's before we in, I, just to move off topic, I think that it would be appropriate just to talk a little bit about long-term care. Before we get, I know I'm putting things at the cart ahead of the horse a little bit, but it's just so monumental that we are here and the news is hot off the press that uh, long-term care and life safety came back completely deficiency-free. And I mean, it's been some, there's been some challenges in the last few months and um, talk about teamwork makes the dream work and all the efforts in long-term care, life safety, Jude, your team should not be overlooked in terms of all the accomplishments of being deficiency-free and um, through all the turmoil and challenges. Everybody, and by the way, we're in an outbreak, which is like as if something could be more complicated. The team, everybody and the staff rose above it all and we are, it's just incredible to be deficiency-free. And I just wanna, before we get started with anything else, I just wanna say congratulations to everybody and thank you. Thank you for all of your work.
Three years in a row.
Sir?
Yeah?
Can you mind if I speak for a moment?
Go ahead.
I'm Ray Bauer. I'm the uh, person that you were kind enough to uh, put in a role of acting um, supervisor administrator. And, you know, I, I think that lack of deficiencies or no deficiencies are important. The average deficiencies in the state of New Hampshire is between five and six deficiencies per facility. But I think what's more important than you all would not have heard, because you weren't at the exit interview, um, is the compliment that, that came about um, as a result of this process. It, and to everything from how perfect the facility looked to uh, how cordial the staff was, to how aware the staff was about their various roles. So it, it, you know, I mean, you have somebody like Michelle and, and, I mean, come on, it, it made my time here like a dream situation. And, and, you know, I've known Jude for a long time, and the deficiency-free piece of that was not unexpected at all, you know, it's, it's.
Well, they catch on little things.
But, you know, there is just every little piece. Uh, I mean, they left here without any suggestions. I mean, I've never been through a survey in my thirties, probably over forty surveys um, in my tenure at Strafford, um. I mean, I've had some deficiency-free, certainly not three in a row. But um, you know, you are so fortunate and, and and, and so, some of that credit needs to go to you. I mean, you, the three of you have, have empowered these people, you know, to do the job that they're doing. And you should be so proud of, of your contributions and, and how it's gone down to the people that work with you. You have an amazing facility. And, and I, I asked to come to this meeting because I just didn't wanna miss the opportunity to, to say uh, the things that you can't see on paper that were said during the process. And um, uh, you know, and there's great future of, you know, a, a great positive future, um. I don't know, you guys are just so blessed and, and, you know, really fortunate. So I've said my piece and thank, thank you for giving me a, a few minutes.
Thank you for joining us, Ray.
Oh, yeah.
I figured since we're on the.
Yeah, I was.
I'll go with that.
Uh, and I apologize, I can't breathe with this mask on, so I think I'm far away, but um, I just wanna take a minute to um, express my gratitude um, for the team. And Ray, you mentioned, it's, you know, we should take credit. I don't think so. We're the elected officials. It's really the team, it's the people that here every day and, and work, and they're, they're very um, they're, they're proud of the work that they do. Um, they take a lot of pride in, in, in keeping up the facilities to where the levels that we're around, um. I, I couldn't have been any more prouder. I mean, just the fact that we, we had the two. I kept bragging that to everybody that I saw, you know, we've got two, we've got two in a row. And I actually had a conversation with somebody in my office who, who wasn't wasn't nursing homes in the past, and she said, there's no way you get two. I'm like, oh, yeah, I'll let me, he'll just put you on the phone. And sure enough, she was like, I'm amazed, but the three is unbelievable. And uh, and I just wanna take a minute, Ray, to thank you for, for helping us out as well.
Right.
We've, we've had some trying times over the last couple of months. Everybody's been pins and needles, but um, it still shows the professionalism of, of our employees and I, I congratulate them. I think we should do something special.
Yeah, um, and yeah, I would just echo those sentiments with respect to you, Ray. Thank you so much for stepping in and helping out. No, really, we, we, we appreciate you very much. And I guess the other point I wanna make is just that, why, you know, it's like, why, what is so great? We're deficiency-free, we look great with the skate. But what it's really saying, what we're really saying in all those and why you have served it, is to make sure the quality of care for the residents is is as best as we can do. And what it's saying, you know, without any recommendations, it's like, we are fulfilling, like, the goals, like, when you put your head on the pillow at night or you leave work, it's like, you have done your best to help people age with dignity and grace and compassion and care. And that's fundamentally the goal, you know, the service is, is important, but it's a reflection of the care and compassion for our residents. So that is like the real wonderful part. So thank you.
Don't sell yourself short, commissioners. Um, uh, i- if things didn't turn out well, who'd be accepting the responsibility for it? It would be you three. So please accept the, the good pieces of this, um, when, when the people that you've entrusted um, have done their jobs, uh, you need to accept some credit for that.
It's easy.
Well, I'll take my word for it. Now, forty years, you know, I've, I've seen it go all different ways.
It's easy work with this crew.
Yes, I just wanna add to that. I wanna thank Ray, um, you know, because Ray again comes with many, many years of experience and um, he was there and supportive, um, backing us up, always there to um, you know, cheer us on, but also have our backs um, for the short amount of time he was here. So I do appreciate, appreciate that. As far as the um, you know, doing something for the staff, we already have something planned, um, planned for, um, I think the seventh, whatever that Friday is. Um, we'll be celebrating the staff that day. So there'll be more to come on that, but that's already in the works.
Great.
Well, congratulations to the entire staff. This is just a fantastic time and worthy time to have a celebration.
Absolutely.
Talked about it, unicorn.
Okay, we move on to the consent agenda now?
Yes, um, and with respect to the accounts payable, this to, I move to approve the, August twenty second, two thousand and twenty-four accounts payable list total of two million nine hundred and sixty-three thousand, four hundred and forty-three dollars and sixty-four cents.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. Uh, any discussion?
Fairly consistent.
All right, Commissioner Churchill?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, so that moves us right to, we're having an abbreviated meeting today because uh, our executive assistant is uh, still recovering from vacation, if you will. I don't know if that's exactly the right way to, uh, put it, but not well enough to uh, join us and, and participate with everything. Um, so uh, we're moving right to commissioners' report. Anybody have anything to add? Besides, congratulations to this nursing home staff.
Sure, and I'll, um, uh, Superintendent Henry is um, out today because they're celebrating a retirement of a um, former um, member of Rockingham. So uh, anyway. And so here's um, just a quick update on DOC, the, there's a hundred and fifty-six um, is the population right now at the Department of Corrections. Uh, the dishwasher project, it is not up and running yet because they're still waiting on parts um, on a, but, you know, assume, once the parts get in, that should be up and running soon. We have five new hires, very exciting, starting out in another four in a few weeks. Uh, so um, really, um, the changes we made in the union, in the contracts, I think are really, we're really starting to see the fruition of that even more so than when they were, you know, just stipends and memorialize those. It is, um, I think, good anecdotal data in terms of how things progress. Um, otherwise, um, business as usual, things are going just fine.
Anything else about commissioner updates? Commissioner Churchill, Ellen, right now? I don't have anything to update, except that we're enjoying some good music today that uh, the residents are actually enjoying. It's been coming through our window.
It's a good celebration.
Okay, do we have somebody from the uh, sheriff's office here that might wanna just briefly touch upon the public hearing that we are hosting at five o'clock?
Do you have anything in particular you wanna say to a caper? Um, I guess the only thing that I would ask commissioners is, if it's possible, I know this is a brief meeting uh, as opposed to adjourning your meeting, if you could take a recess until the public hearing so that you could go back into session at the conclusion of the public hearing and take the vote for us to apply for the grant, because then I, I have a couple of the hoops we have to jump through of uh, federal partners that I have to send it off to to get approvals.
Okay, so noted. We'll recess rather than adjourn.
Thank you.
And that will occur at five P M. And I believe we're supposed to be, or was the meeting announced to be in the Hilton? Believe it was, so we're gonna have to move.
Right.
But uh, we'll still officially mark it that way.
Correct.
Okay. All right. Is there a problem? Laila, you wanna add something to that discussion?
That was posted for the Maureen Barrows Conference Room.
Oh, okay, so we stay right here, that's good. Okay, excellent. It's a lot easier.
Yeah.
All right, then we'll move on to Finance Department.
Grant application for this patient. And this is um, with respect to the charging and fueling infrastructure grant, which is exciting because it can help us with the offset some of our costs regarding um, the uh, source. I move to approve the submission of an application for a charging and fueling infrastructure grant to the United States Department of Transportation and designate the Senior Director of Finance as the county's authorized representative for this grant, as recommended by the Senior Director of Finance.
Do you have any discussion on applying for this grant?
I have, oh, don't.
No, no, please.
Um, I just have one question. You provided us Chuck with the, probably about five or six pages of documents, um. If we were to get this grant, do we have to make those um, E V stations open to the public?
What they would prefer to see is, yes, they'd be open to the public. I understand that right now we don't have signage. I think it says employees only, I think. Um.
We don't have any way for the public to pay either. There's no like.
Right, now, one thing that in theory could be said too, is that if we're gonna generate the solar array enough to more than satisfy um, the county's needs, you could say that some of the access could go, would be going towards this.
Right.
To offset whatever the public might make use of, of these. Also, with this grant, we'd be able to instead of just doing ten bases with five chargers actually connected at the new building project, you could actually do instead of having five empty bases, we could actually have another five, so fully ten units with the chargers included for all, all ten, not just five, as part of the new municipal project and maybe even be able to do um, if it's possible, another two possibly behind the underhill building as well, in addition to the other nine that are already just developed, completed across the complex.
Okay.
This is, this is the future. So I'm, it's so, I think it's great that we're in, having grant money to invest in technology that is gonna be the future. It's just increasingly used in charging stations.
And the net effect is actually we decrease our existing um, amount for an ARPA project right now already for the E V charger thing. It is, this would be, uh, this has a match, but it's eighty percent, twenty percent, that twenty percent would be less than what we would have right now for the E V project, just for nine minutes, never mind covering, what, thirty-one in the end?
Yeah, so we'll increase the money.
For twenty-one years.
Have available in loss revenue, right? Is that, it's coming out of loss revenue?
Yes, so this returns some funds back to loss intersection as well.
Same.
Which is great.
Another question, I can, um. The, there's different uh, systems. There's uh, the very slow system is on one of the middle and there's the fast chargers, right? Are we looking at fast chargers?
I think we weren't because of the damage. I guess it's been doing this some vehicles, some E Vs, so we're gonna go with the middle, the, the level two. Um, so again, not as fast as a level three D C charging, but still, yes.
But we, we have level, the ones that are operational right now are level two and they function well, yeah.
So I'm just thinking, more than likely, the general public's not gonna typically use them because they're not gonna sit here for eight hours or four hours, whatever the amount of time is. If there were fast charges, we may see the public use them a little bit more frequently, but that's where I was going. Because originally, you know, we brought these on as, we were talking about like benefits to, for our nurses when, when they come in on a shift and they've got a hybrid or electric car they can actually plug in. Um, and that would be a, a benefit to our employees. So I was just kinda curious, because if we have the public, if we we have the public using them, that's one thing, uh, but it sounds to me as if, I think that would be probably limited if it's, if it's a median. Thank you.
Okay, and the other discussion on accepting this uh, grant application?
On the side note, just that the grant, a new grant writer is already uh, in the ground, so that's great to see too.
Great, oh, all right, Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Churchill?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
Thank you.
That answers. All right, uh, next on the agenda is to talk about long-term care, um, survey, but we've already done that. You have any more that you'd like to, anything, anybody have anything more they'd like to add to that discussion? Like, besides congratulations, Commissioner Churchill?
Thank you. Um, so my understanding is, and I am fairly new to this part of the process, is that after, after three of these deficiency-frees, we have the feds come in, or possibly can come in. They don't have to, but they can.
Fifty days.
Yeah, and so, you know, what does, so as Commissioner Coyle just mentioned, you know, within sixty days, they could come in, um. So I would imagine that we're, we are still concerned about that, obviously, and we're gonna.
Yeah, yeah, we'll remain, um, you know, survey-ready as, as always.
Yeah.
Um, nothing's gonna change for us clinically or anything, but um, we'll just be waiting for them, they show up. Yeah, same thing with life safety. We had one federal look behind in the past, maybe ten years, and it was like, every day you need to make sure all your stuff is where it should be, so.
Have you, have you, Jude, have you seen the feds come in?
Just once for life safety, and it was fine.
Okay.
Most of it was verification and a lot of it was quizzing, like, how do you manage your emergency generator transfers, like, stuff like that?
Yeah.
You know?
Okay.
Run afro for you.
It wasn't, it was, it wasn't overly challenging and they were happy with us. And, you know, it was just one more box they've got checked, so it was okay. I don't think it's the same thing as a federal on their level. I mean, it's like survey, um, you know, yeah, pretty much, yeah, so.
If I could just add one other thing, uh, I've been through a couple, um, some of it might depend on where they are in their, as you know, their fiscal year is, uh, you know, October first. So if they've already done, um, their theoretic ten percent of, is what they're looking for, they might, it might just go by. Uh, but certainly, um, uh, we've been talking about it since day one, you know, me being here. And actually, the surveyor mentioned it, you know, but don't be surprised, but she said also, don't be worried. Uh, you know, there, no, is there really confident about how thorough they were? Uh, because this is a survey for them too. They actually get deficiencies if it's something they didn't see that they should have seen. So I think they're, you know, they were well aware when they walked out this door, that they're likely to get.
Scrutinized as well, yeah.
You know, and, and I think, um, would have, uh, if there was any small thing that they could have found, they would have done it.
Okay, that's good to know.
Which just adds more to how great it is.
Yeah.
You came out deficiency-free. They would have, you know.
Are you a little bit jealous?
I'm happy. Couldn't be happier to see the reflection of the work that you all did. Um, would I love to be deficiency-free? And no, but with some kind of luck, well, if I have another good survey coming up, I'll be up to five stars. I'll be happy with that. Um, we're, we, three years ago, we had an unfortunate medication error at our hospice house. That still carries with us, uh, but wouldn't you know it, they updated as of July thirty-first, and our met error was in August. You know, if, if we would have just had another month, we would have been fine, but uh, no, I, I couldn't be happier. It, it, you know, the, the counties, you know, yes, there's eleven county nursing homes. I get that. But we're like one nursing home. I mean, we work together to try and help each other all the time. I mean, Chuck knows, he's on the administrator calls and, and uh, it, it's a, a tremendous value of, to learn. So I've, I've, I'll be honest with you. And I've been doing this for a long time, and there's stuff I'm bringing back that Michelle is talking.
Nice.
And, and uh, I already asked her if I can send a couple of people down to um, learn a couple of, watch a couple of things that you guys are doing.
That's awesome.
Well, it's true. It's like if we can rise together, then that just increases the quality of care. Yeah, exactly, increases the quality of care for.
For everyone.
Yeah, that's again, the goal.
Same thing. I'm, I have a group email chain, and it's with all the D O Ns, the A D O Ns, and the infection preventionists from all the counties. And we're constantly throwing stuff back and forth, so it's, it's really a great, great community of, of homes. And, yeah.
We all benefit from collective wisdom.
Sure, and, and you'll be getting some of that too, from your new administrator who's uh, you know, part of the chain that, I, I've talked to her uh, once or twice and, and uh, she's coming with some uh, stuff that she's picked up from the chain about some new regulations that are coming into place. So that's, that's another good.
Value, yeah.
Yeah, I'm talking about the, the Biden rules.
If I could speak for just a second about that?
Sure, that's the topic.
The uh, I think that the Biden administration was disappointed that they were asked to delay the implementation of the staffing.
Yeah.
So what they did is, they reached out to CMS and said to CMS, uh, why don't you implement something that's gonna force these facilities to do it sooner? So what they came out with was a program where you need to uh, talk about staffing in your facility assessment and how the people that you have in your facility right now prove to them how your current staffing meets those requirements. So what they did is just did an end around.
Okay.
And, and made you do it sooner. Um, I think most, well, probably half the county homes is the Biden administration's thing is, it is in effect in a couple of years or three years as it phases in, won't have any problem. So a couple, few of them in the western part of the state, um, will, because they don't have the registered nurse, the R N coverage twenty-four seven.
Right, right.
Um, which is a foreign concept to us, um, you know, to both of our facilities, uh. But um, I, I think that uh, CMS just tried to pull the fast one.
Okay.
But interestingly enough, the state has no idea how to enforce it. They haven't been educated about it, uh, because I had made a call in advance of your survey to find out how they might enforce that.
Right.
And they were, it was a nothing issue.
One of the surveyors did say it's coming sooner than expected, but.
I thought it was like a two-year, two-year.
It, it is, but the new CMS thing technically said August eighth.
Okay.
So uh, my actual hope was that your survey was gonna be before then, uh, but when we made a call, I made a call in advance to, with one of my employees who used to be a surveyor, uh, to the head surveyor to ask her how they were gonna enforce this August eighth date. She had no idea. So it, it, was it discussed? Not, not really. Uh, not in the specificity that's come out in eleven pages of, of the requirement. But this will give us plenty of time, um, certainly before your next survey, and I'm a December kind of survey facility, so hopefully we'll have plenty of time to.
Look it out.
Do we have adequate staff and coverage that, that complies with this?
Yep.
New standard, I think, that's what I understood before, so it's really not any specific concern to us.
No, we do. The, the only time that any facility could get into, you know, that they, you gotta pay a little bit more attention is if your R N that's giving your twenty-four hour coverage, say, calls out on a shift, you have to have a plan, you know, to replace that R N. You can't just go that shift without them. So that would be a little bit different. Um, you know, if you have a handful of them, you know, that's okay, you've got that extra buffer, but it will be, for some reason, that R N's on vacation or, like I said, there's a call out. We'll have to be looking at that more closely.
Right.
But you're, you're well-equipped, I mean, staff-wise to, to, I always put two on uh, because that way, if, you know, something unforeseen happens, you know, I'll have a backup and, and uh, I know you guys are you're, you're right on with your staffing. And, and what are they, really, what are they gonna say? Your five stars in staffing, they're gonna say, oh, you don't meet the requirement? Well, wait a minute. You know, how many different requirements do you want us to meet?
Right, right. I think we have our federal delegation members, I think, I believe all four are kind of in our camp anyway, fighting for us, so.
Recognizing.
And Healthcare Association claims that they're taking it to court, and they have every confidence that they're gonna win.
Okay. Then we'll move on to department head updates. Um, I, I'd like each person to just state their name and position. I think it's a little easier for somebody who was coming on, um, watching us so that they know which department and what we're discussing. And Julie, if you'd start us off, we'll go around the table.
Um, I actually, I think I'll defer to Allison, who is on the call, because she has been um, working this week. Actually, we've been partnering this week almost every minute of the day, so I will feel perfect pleasure during the afternoon.
All right, Allison.
Hey, good afternoon, everyone. I'm Allison Kibakowski, the Senior Director of Human Resources. Um, we, I just wanna announce that the H, H R is moving. Um, temporarily, we will be out of the building next Wednesday, the twenty-eighth. And we want to uh, say we appreciate the support from the long-term care community as we reside in a couple of variations. Reside in a couple of variations of locations within the nursing home building and I'm glad. State survey is over, so we weren't underfoot when that went on. So our building is being painted and we're very excited and wanna be, um, saying kudos and thank yous ahead of time to, uh, Jude. Coordinating that for us, we will have our phones forwarded to, um, our, our numbers, uh, will be forwarded. Um, we can receive emails, um, we will be able to, um, deal with faxes and, uh, printing and everything else, so you will find us. Um, in the nursing home building and we can reach out to you if you just send us an email. We have been hard at work on getting the years of service prepped on, meaning getting invitations that'll go to the board next week to look at. And, um, get their okay on and get those out, um, I do want to do, uh, shout out that it's, uh, annual scarecrow time. Uh, we are, yeah, we're making little twists this year, it's going to be themed. So the flyer will go out either tomorrow or Monday, just to kind of give you a heads up and to protect the date. We hope you will all participate, I know definitely the, um, assisted living community. Really enjoys being out there and walking around and touring all of them and also some of the residents. Um, we will have the, um, residents, uh, do a vote for the best on their own, but then they'll be voting, that'll be up on the UKG platform. Um, and we've just been super busy with a lot of personnel stuff, so it's been a busy time, but we're getting prepped and packed up. We have also been packing to move, so we're ready to go, but thank you very much.
Great, thank you, Allison, Robin.
Hello, Robin Bernier, IT manager here at county, I have nothing new to report today.
All right, Jude.
Good afternoon, Jude Gates, Facilities Director, um. I don't have a whole lot to report either, I have maybe a conversation to be had in a new business, um. I am of course very proud of the facility's staff. That, um, that's efficiency free, sometimes it's the little things, you know, our third shift technician. Checks every single fire extinguisher every single month and none of them are missed. So those little things, you know, kinda in addition to just. The culture of safety, when we do a fire alarm test, if any of your fire doors don't close, the nurses call us right away, so we make sure the fire doors are all working properly. It's, it's very much a team effort and some of, sometimes it's just like the minutia that adds up and I'm feeling really good about it.
I mean, the thing is, the, the citation to be some things for such minor things like a. Small signage or like rust on a push door, you know, a small or the way it hinges, so. There's so many little things particularly, you know, and that goes both for. Yeah. A constant vigilance that is required in order to maintain deficiency.
Absolutely, as far as the dish machine, if the jail cell is the jack floor has been cooperated, um, we're waiting for fittings. So they know we're anxious as soon as the fittings are in, we're, we're. Kind of at the mercy of the distributor at this point, but once we have the fittings, we'll be ready to go. Um, next week we'll be doing an overnight or late afternoon shutdown on the steam to do a repair to the DA and the biomass plant. Um, we pushed it out because of surveys to keep things a little quieter, so that'll be one evening next week. All's well, building's going well, things are moving fast, so.
Excellent, excellent. Ray, do you have anything else you'd like to add to what's going on?
Just thanking you for allowing me to be here, appreciate it.
Great, Michelle.
Yeah, Michelle Melanson Schmidt, um, interim administrator. Um, just wanna update on the COVID cases in the building, uh, we only have one resident that remains with COVID, all of our testing. On the unit that residents were under surveillance have been negative, we have to continue another week of it. Um, but I really feel like it is where it is right now, I don't anticipate. Um, any new cases related to this outbreak, if we do have another one, it would be totally unrelated. Um, so the plan is to not obviously have any more of those tests all come back, so that's, that's a good thing. That one resident is still up on F two and will be cleared, I think, the middle of next week to go back to their unit. Um, there is still an uptick with staff, every day we tend to have one or two people. Um, so we are currently up to eight that are active right now. So, uh, two or three come on, two or three come off, so that number's been staying right around between six and nine pretty consistently. Um, we can talk about survey again, uh, but yes, we will be celebrating, uh, the staff, uh, two Fridays from now. And that will be with Chantel as well, uh, we were gonna have the kind of meet and greet for everybody, just to. Sort of hang out, it was gonna be a potluck thing, but now we're gonna incorporate it with celebration, so all the staff can come down and, and mingle in that. Um, so that's really good timing. Um, our dishwasher on long-term care, I mean, Wendell was down for a couple of days. Um, it did delay the survey process and observations down there, but the team was great. To get the drain cleared and everything, we went back to China, um, yesterday, I think for breakfast, um.
You went all the way to China?
Absolutely, only the bats, right? Um, and I know A L F transition, um, last evening. Uh, they were so on paper, but today I think they went back, so that's all good, all lovely money, but. Other than that, for me, it's just been really survey, very focused, so.
Would you clarify wh- which date are you planning to have a little celebration, is it the sixth?
Yes, the sixth.
The sixth, okay, great. Uh, Kendra.
Hi, I'm Kendra Mayo, I'm the, um, administrator for our assisted living community. Um, like Michelle over in long-term care, we do have active residents and staff with COVID. Through contract tracing, um, none of the cases are related, we had some staff travel. Um, and of course, when they got back, they tested positive for COVID, and then our two residents who have tested positive for COVID. Um, they are residents who are, um, one has their own vehicle, so they're out in the community quite often. And then our other resident is often out with family members, um, so actively watching those, uh, we've tested three other. We've tested three times, we've had no additional positive cases, um, and we will do that through next week. And like Michelle said, over in assisted living, we don't anticipate any new positive precedents. I'm very excited for everyone in long-term care for another deficiency free survey. Uh, and I think it just speaks to the testament of how committed our employees are from housekeeping to the kitchen, to our nurses, to facilities. I just think it's, it speaks volumes of who we have here at the community, so congratulations to everybody.
Great, thank you, Kendra, Char.
Um, Chuck Nickerson, Finance Director for the county. Um, back to my little mini trip to, to Sweden, which went very well. Visiting a former county employee out there, actually his wife is from, uh, Sweden.
Nice.
Um, so yes, it was a good time to talk, I think I was in like four different castles, one palace, saw some really old churches. Makes you realize just how young, like, United States is.
Right.
Where you can touch a building built back in like eleven hundreds, it's, it's something. Um, uh, but hit the ground running, um, thank you for approving the grant application, uh, the reason I asked to be designated as the authorized representative is because. That's application is to be submitted by the authorized individual through grants.gov, so that's why I was asking for that condition, so thank you. Um, so that grant would be, um, up to or at least a half million dollar reward, that's what we're trying to go for, eighty percent would actually be grant funds. So that's good news for the county. Um, I know that, uh, Molly Bullock, the grant writer, she's been looking at many other grants, she's already kind of resource. For the community as well, on grant opportunities as well. And I know that she's definitely looking out for, for. Other opportunities as well, she brought another. Um, I think there's been a couple other, uh, things she's been looking at, um, for DOC as well. Um, and so that corrections ones, it's like if you just gather the information the federal government wants, you can even. Get some funding for that, um, I know she was looking for. A different E M P G grant as far as dispatch, uh, equipment, unfortunately, there isn't one currently. Cause the application period just ended in like late June, on the one that we're, that I'm looking before was kind of looking at. Um, the one that she came across, it was about having some sort of like certified emergency center, so I'm not. Heard of free one, I, I'm, something tells me that, of course, if I've kind of gone that route, it's might be more trouble when you let it's. Worth, actually. Um, but again, just lots of work with grants, um, taking care of the different, um, MS forms that are needed to, for the county to get its official. County tax apportionment from the state. Um, so I do have a form in with Cheryl to have, uh, Representative Wilder and Puskett sign. Then next week will be the one form MS forty-five for the commissioners to sign off on. That's basically the un-audited numbers for six thirty twenty-four in the state's format. So that'll be coming next week. I'll have many other things, sorry, Lila, for, for next week as well. But, yeah, that was a held back from, uh, from this week. Um, and also I've been working in partly my position, I've got a special for NHAC. Um, uh, it's not just myself, but, but the nursing home individuals too, as far as affiliate. We've been looking at, um, as far as our county cap, technically the first eighteen months. Of the public health emergency, the county's overpaid. Um, as far as a county cap applications, because it was in excess of the non-federal share, because the federal government had. Increased the federal medical assistance percentage effective basically back to one-one of twenty. Um, the state, while they gave the counties monies after the fact. Starting in fiscal year twenty twenty-two, they did not do so for the first eighteen months. So I know that, um, Representative Stephen Pearson is, he's the one who chairs. Um, our Subcommittee for Cataclysmic Assistance, he's willing to sponsor a bill. That will get the county their monies back, cause technically the state was paid twice over.
Um, wow.
So, and by state law. One six seven colon eighteen dash eight, we're only supposed to pay the non-federal share.
Right.
So the county's paid in excess of, so I've been doing some math, actually shared with, with the rate of the numbers that we have just for. Fiscal year twenty-one, um, however, I need to work on what the six months, the first six months of the public health emergency were. And, uh, and then we'll be ready to have those legislation that Representative Pearson can bring forward, so.
How much was the old, how much was the older job?
It seemed to be.
Uh, fiscal, fiscal year, fiscal year twenty twenty-one is over fifteen million alone, so if you were to. Say the claims are sightless for the last six months. Of fiscal year twenty, you're still looking at another, say, seven plus million, so over twenty-two million, did you divide it up amongst the ten counties? Rockingham's share, my guess, would be about three point three million. Uh, I know this would be of importance to Hillsborough County, which actually saw a huge aggregate increase. In their allocated county cap for twenty twenty-five.
Wow.
Um, just for reference, I believe that only two counties saw increases in their aggregate cap. No, Merrimack and Hillsborough, Hillsborough got hit the hardest for FY twenty twenty-five. Rockham County, um, our net cap went down by five hundred seventy-five thousand, so already we have good news budget-wise.
Yeah.
Now the gates for twenty twenty-five, so I'm, I'm very happy with that.
Good.
So, we're, again, this is. A bit of good monetary news to the county and, and again, I think legally it should be remitted back to the counties. So, again, other than that, just. Busy as usual, so. Thank you.
Nice, yeah.
Patricia Conway, County Attorney, um. I'm happy to report that I have a few, um, folks in training this week, I, one of my attorneys is in Alabama. Had a training put on by NECMAC, was, which is a national center for missing and exploited children, it's a free training. Um, even better, week long, and it's regarding forensic evidence, basically, um. A lot of information regarding child sexual abuse images and, and different types of forensic evidence, which is. Really big right now, we're just seeing more and more of it, so this type of a training is really valuable to, to the attorney and he'll come back and share it with the rest of us. Um, we also were notified about a free training put on by the National District Attorney's Association. Um, regarding a presentation of forensic evidence in court, uh, so preparing a forensic examiner. Um, common defenses that defense attorneys may use and presenting evidence to jurors, like how to do it, um, the most. Uh, efficient way, so those are, uh, free trainings, one is right now, and I have an attorney attending it in Vermont. And, um, the second one is in September and I have a, the second attorney attending that one, so. Again, I think these are just great resources and I'm excited for them to come back and share that information with the rest of us. Um, we did have, uh, some people start in our office, so we had two attorneys. Starts, um, these are the folks that both took the bar exam recently, so they're not, um. Haven't passed a bar. Yet, hopefully they do, they'll, we'll get the results in October, but they started and, and they're in the office, very excited to be there, we're excited to have them. We also had, uh, a woman start in victim witness coordinator or specialist position. She came to us through, I think, like Child Protective Services in Maine, uh, so she's got a lot of good experience and we're happy to have her there, so. Um. That's pretty much it, other than the usual.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right, someone from the sheriff's office who would like to chime in?
Well, I'll start off, I'm Chuck Musa, yes, I'm the sheriff. Um, I really don't have much to report this week and, uh, we'll see you guys at five o'clock, thank you.
Excellent. Um. I guess that is it for department head updates, uh, do we have any new business or old business that somebody would like to bring up? Seeing none?
I just, I'd like to approach a subject if I may, Chuck and I have been talking about this, um. We have a lot of work, some of it is as a result of the municipal project, that's gonna be happening. I don't know how to make myself louder.
I guess I need irrigates.
Across the street from the nursing home, that long parking lot that runs alongside of the facility's building. DOT is compelling us to close it off. Um, the whole thing. Because when they looked at the driveway permit for the new building, they looked at the entire complex. And there's not proper line of sight, et cetera, et cetera, so they've, uh, they've. They're directing us to close that off, and I think we, we said that we were willing to do that quite a while ago. It, it, so that they would give us the permit for the new building, so we're at the point now where we have to start looking at getting that work done. We have, um, the replacement water lane, water line, which is a, an ARPA project. From the water tower down to, um, Sturven Way, there's going to be a fire main crossing. From, um, approximately the admin building, a little bit further up this way, going straight across the road. Because DOT doesn't let you do diagonal cuts, so we have to go straight across. Um, all of those things are happening at the same time, the, the fire line is part of the municipal building project already, the water line. Is not, it's an ARPA project and closing off that, that, all that curb cut is also an ARPA project. And I'm, I'm wondering how the board feels about. Looking into getting a big waiver or more appropriately, I think, a change order with Harvey. They can direct Pichet, they already have their equipment on hand, we should have the spec for the water main within the next week or two. So we could get a price from Pichet, we know right away, we can get the funding committed before the end of the year for ARPA. Um, the permit needs to be filed in the next week or two with DOT. But it's everything they have directed us to do, so I expect we would be able to get that permit. In, in a reasonable period of time, so that we could get pricing for that fairly quickly. Again, and get it committed by the end of the year, but I didn't wanna go forward with an assumption that you would have an appetite for that until we had a chance to talk about it.
My initial thought would be that if we have construction crew here. It certainly would, it would, I would think that we'd get a much better price than have to bring in equipment and bid out the, the, the project, I have no problem with the. Who, who's here and getting a price for them, I don't know, other commissioners. It's, that just seems to make sense.
Yeah, and there's a time factor as well because of the ARPA funding, so.
Right, we can, cause we have only to the end of the year to earmark, so it makes sense to try to, um, to, and especially because. They all work together, you know, one, doing, you can think about doing the work with, we're going all in the same area, it's like, you might as, bringing in someone else to clean up some. It doesn't make any sense, yeah.
Right.
Yeah, and Pichet's work has been.
Except learning, really, they've been enjoying.
From what I've seen.
So if someone's putting in the water main, they can make sure that there's not gonna be a conflict when they are ready to cross with the fire main and so on. I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Acceptable.
Yeah, I think you should move forward and, and bring us an estimate.
Okay, thank you.
This could work out, coincide well with our discussion about, I know, we had some discussion last time about trying to. Do a, you know, deep dive on where we are with ARPA, because knowing that we need to earmark, so we, I think I, I'd said. S- suggested September, I don't know what you guys, everybody feels about that, but if we target some, um, you know, a meeting in September to try to. Look at where we are with all of our identified projects, so we can get, make sure that we're not leaving anything on the table, we don't.
So would, like, the end of September work?
I think a little.
Actually, very, if you want to the very first meeting.
Yeah.
Or, um.
It's in a couple weeks.
No, it's fine, because, so I can already give an update through June thirty, cause I had to file the quarterly.
Oh.
Numbers at the end of July. And I don't think we've had, uh, maybe aside from really the building related items, we haven't had a lot of activity. For July and August, so I could quickly give where we are through.
So I could quickly give where we are through June thirty in the format I did before, like a four, like ledger size.
I love that.
Yeah.
Sheets are down. So.
And then we'll just need to know what the new price is for the extra work that needs to be done.
What projects we're not, you know, what realistically we're going to do, you know, we had some COVID relief money that we're not going to expend or, you know, so. We need to figure out how was in our rearrange of them.
Shoot, is that the one that they have to go twenty one feet on their?
Twenty one feet is just to do the road crossing down at the new driveway.
Oh.
Uh, we can do an open cut across North Road. DOT won't allow it, and part of the cut is through swamp. That's why it's wetland. So they actually have to go twenty one feet deep on either side of North Road. Put in a pit and go under at twenty one feet of depth. That's the requirement. And so it's changing the size of the pipe. It's changing the size of the insulation. It's a meaningful change order to the project. But it's the only way we can get water and sewer across the street. We're kind of. At their mercy. We've gone back and forth and back and forth and.
But you might as well. We're putting in infrastructure that's hopefully lasts for very long forever. So it's like, yeah, longer than anyone. So, I mean, in the sense of, we have the ARPA money, we're in the middle of projects, you know, doing excavation work. That's like strike while the iron is hot.
We're doing it such great shape and just because of our water mains, if everything, it's great.
Yeah.
And the focus of Molly will be look for other water structure grants too, whatever we might be able to do under the infrastructure, you know, act.
For sure.
You know, obviously, the by American apartments apply, but still.
Yeah, water improvements, there's water, water plant improvements, all of that stuff. Yeah. Thank you very much.
Okay, great. Go forward to those numbers and and the ARPA reports. Kendra?
I have one thing. Um, I know that this is a shortened meeting today, um, but uh before it was a shortened meeting, we had on the agenda, um, the. License renewal application for our new administrator. Um, so I was hoping to get signatures of the commissioners today. Um, so we can send our paperwork off to the state of New Hampshire, so we can have the new administrator's license for once he starts.
Sounds great.
Do we need a motion for that?
I don't think we need a motion. I think.
You just need to sign them.
Yeah.
The form. Yeah, great.
And that's marked with the yellow tab. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Any other new business? All right, seeing none. Uh, do we have anybody from the public that has a public comment? It's the court.
Uh, with all love and affection for my wife. I think you guys have to appoint a uh chair under the RSA twenty eight one, as you shall appoint the chair in the front. With the RSA.
So noted. Well, what do the other commissioners think about that?
Well, if it's RSA, it's obviously it's law, right?
It's a trial.
To the plan. According to attorney coil. Was there anything else in that?
Oh, that's very short.
Can you just repeat that one more time?
You can read it. It's twenty eight one.
Twenty eight one?
The question is, what is, what timeframe does it require you to come?
Because. County commissioners of each county values from their number, chairman.
Oh. Well, we did that in our organizational meeting. But there's no time. Well.
I mean, like, what? I don't.
I'm not. Thank you for that clarification.
For no bill.
I agree to just create another forum, however. Um.
We, maybe we can take it up next meeting.
I think, well, I mean, I guess, and maybe we, maybe at this point, the remedy is to get a legal opinion. My feeling is, I do agree that we need to. Make that appointment. The question is, and what my position is, given the tenuous nature of. The election in Penn, you know, coming up in the primary being just uh like just over two weeks away that. Um, you know, the question is, is that something we have to implement? What the timeframe is to move from acting chair to an actual nomination of a chip. And so maybe, I guess. My suggestion is, uh, we get an opinion, a legal opinion in the next week. We can come back in a week, and. If I am wrong about keeping an acting chair for two weeks, then I will go home and be told.
Well, it'll be so fun. It'll only be one week left. Something's done, because I mean, I don't care.
I think we can just. That's what I would suggest. Give ourselves a week to just try to get a little more.
Are you okay with seeking counsel on that topic?
I, whatever you guys want to do is. I I don't really care. Be honest. I could, I could go either way. If you want to, you're ready to make a motion now, I could do that. If you want to wait, I can wait. Well, it doesn't really matter.
Then um I'd say we take it up at the next meeting.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, any other public comment? There's somebody on the phone. I have no idea who they are.
I'm comfortable.
Uh, maybe, maybe not. Said he had golf league today.
No, I think it is. He said he was having, he typed me saying he was having trouble.
He's not.
Okay. Um.
So we want to reset?
In that case, um. I accept the motion to go into non-public.
So moved. Pursuant to ninety one eight colon three, section two personnel matters. Uh, actually, I think this first one is uh not a personnel, um, but um, it's ninety one eight colon three, so.
And we're here.
Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Cherichello?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, very non-public. Okay, we are um. Out of our non-public meetings, and we have a couple of um. Motions to uh entertain. Commissioner Coyle?
So with respect to the county attorney's office, non-public, I move to seal those minutes indefinitely because it could render a proposed action ineffective.
Second.
Any discussions?
No.
Uh, Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Cherichello?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
I I have two further motions, uh, actually, three. Um. One, I uh move to codify the offer of employment to CDK.
I'll second that.
Yeah, question on that. What do you, what do you mean by codified?
Memorialize.
So the.
Affirm.
Did she sign a contract?
Yes.
I don't, I don't understand the motion.
I'm.
The motion is just to clarify that there is no question that we previously, um.
There, there can't be any uh retroactive concern about the uh motion to file.
Yeah, I'm gonna abstain because I didn't sign it.
Okay.
Sure.
On the motion, Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
I vote yes.
Okay.
And Commissioner Cherichello?
Staying to say I'm not signing it.
Okay. I move to amend the July twenty fourth, twenty twenty four meeting minutes to reflect. Meeting minutes.
At in in instead of entitled, instead of non-public meeting minutes.
Yes, uh, for clarification, that is, those meeting minutes are public. We, because we did not seal them.
That's right. They're already public and um. It's the interview.
Correct.
CK.
So can you just clarify it one more time? I have to understand.
Make that motion once again.
Okay, I move to amend the title. Of the July twenty fourth, twenty four. Meeting minutes to meeting minutes.
I versus non, non.
Just, I'm just the title is changing to meeting minutes. Without any reference to anything else.
Okay.
Do you have a second? I second.
I wasn't for the vote, so I.
Okay, so I'll second that.
Abstain.
Um, Commissioner Coyle?
Yeah.
Commissioner Cherichello abstain, and I vote yes.
Okay. And I think the easy thing to do with respect to, I know we said we were gonna wait a week, but I think on terms of chair. But I think the easy thing to do is just, I move to appoint Commissioner Godu as acting chair. It's just. Codifying again the same, um, what we discussed as you in the role of acting chair.
Second. We have any discussion on that?
Let's go.
Uh, Commissioner Cherichello?
I'm staying.
Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
I vote yes.
So now you have acting.
I'm officially acting chair.
Correct. It's not.
That's just fine. I just want to make sure that all of our proceedings are legal and handled.
Correct. It just gives you.
I think it would have been anyway, because you're vice chair, so in the absence of a chair.
I'm, I'm just saying that you have the authority. It just gives you signatory authority as chair, and you're gonna.
Agreed.
Um, okay, at this point, um, we are going to take a pause. Um, we're still remaining in public session, but we're gonna take a brief recess. Well, by brief, I mean about twenty minutes till five o'clock to the public hearing.
Okay, um.
Thank you.
We are in recess. Okay. Uh, good afternoon. Good afternoon. We're uh back from our uh break, and we are officially out of recess recess. Uh, at this point, I uh call the public hearing for the sheriff's department drone grant. Uh, open. If anybody is available that wants to speak on on this topic.
Uh, yes, this is Major Bashoff from the Rockham County Sheriff's Office. If there are members of the public present. Uh, the reason that we have this public hearing is because uh an aerial drone is considered part of a controlled. Item, and since we're looking to expend our asset forfeiture funds for the purpose of this. It requires that there be a public hearing so that the public could ask questions and understand why we're seeking this uh before getting our further. Clearance from the federal partners to uh authorization to expend those funds. So that's why we're here today, and I'm gonna have Lieutenant Cunningham uh give a the quick overview again. Uh, in case anyone does end up watching this remotely or wants to go back and see it, so they have that information available.
Sir, I am Lieutenant Lindsey County. I am Lieutenant for the Investigation Division for the Rockham County Sheriff's Office. I I am looking to uh get approval to spend eight thousand six hundred seventy one dollars eighty eight cents to. Uh, start a drone program. Uh, that would allow us to buy uh the DJI Maverick three thermal. Uh, drone. Uh, the reason for this uh drone purchase would be to start a drone program that would allow us to. Uh, be a resource to our agency as well as other agencies within the county. Um, the is not many um departments, uh, that have aerial platforms, uh, such as a drone. Um, that is readily available to uh anybody when they need it. Uh, so we are looking to start that to be a resource to other um agencies. Um, what led me to start this is uh we've had, over the past few months, had several incidences. Uh, throughout the county that uh a drone was required to locate, um, and. Assist officers taken into custody in armed suspects. Uh, and this allowed officers to uh safely apprehend and uh get a visual of. The suspect uh before, before putting in officers. Um, in danger. So. Uh, if you have any questions, I can uh answer them now.
Only that, I just add that, um, I guess I I have a question, but also a comment. One, um. I thought my experience is that. Drones are also helpful, not just within triaging us a emergency situation, but also in. Dissecting what took place in the aftermath, that what we've been seeing, you know, throughout law enforcement is similar to body worn cameras. The joint, having this footage is very helpful in understanding what took place, how um, how officers responded, and it is a. Uh, great tool for both safety and transparency and accountability and um, and just generally, um. I think very helpful for law enforcement. It's a great tool, and I think where a lot of small departments don't have access to the drone, then. It will be uh particularly useful in critical incidents. My only other question is, who, what's the plan for training? Um, that was my comment, but what's the planning for training a, um, someone to. Um, use the drone and what do you think the cost is going to be associated with that training?
Okay, so the um, the training uh will be done in-house, uh, and that will be done, um. That shouldn't cost anything extra than what I've already said. Uh, within that total amount of money. The only extra expense would be, I believe, the total is seven hundred dollars. Um, that would allow us to send two pilots to the. Um, to get their drone pilot license and their part one or seven license uh through the FAA. We already have one deputy that's already partially completed that process. Um, so I believe, off the top of my head, it's three fifty per deputy to get that training uh to hold the license. And then the uh hands-on training for the device will be conducted uh during training sessions. Uh, within the sheriff's office.
And we do already have deputies that have uh expressed interest in being the visual observers that are uh required to accompany the pilot when they're flying uh. Piloting the drone.
Correct.
So we'll end up having two certified pilots for the drone, as well as two certified visual observers for the drone. And uh the cost for those licenses are already included in in what we presented.
And the uh, the money for the training um is also coming out of asset forfeiture, um. Funding as well, that uh doesn't need um specialized approval for it.
Great. So that's included in that eight thousand dollar cost.
So the eight thou, the eight thousand six hundred seventy one dollars eighty eight cents is the cost for the device. Uh, and the accessories that come with it. That is the money that we have to get approval through um the DOJ to spend. Um, for the device. The uh roughly seven hundred dollars for the uh training for the pilots will still come out of asset forfeiture. It just doesn't need approval to use uh money for training. So all the money combined will all come out of asset forfeiture.
All right. Thank you for that clarification. It's nice for the public. Someone might watch it later and understand the total cost associated.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
With that.
Well, with that, I don't see anybody here from the public. I don't know if we should wait a little longer.
I I'll make a motion that we open the public hearing.
Um.
Second. I think we already.
I think I declared the meeting open, but uh Commissioner Cherichello?
Yes.
Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
Yes, I agree.
I make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Um. Any other discussion on that? Commissioner Cherichello?
Yes.
Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
I vote yes. Okay, we'll call the public hearing closed on this topic. Thank you very much. Uh, I think it's a great program to. For us to be participating.
And then if we, yeah, we if we could just add the commissioners to the course of the continuation of their meeting, go ahead and move the authorization of us uh. Uh, as the governing board of the county uh to go ahead and process this request to the DOJ. Uh, for submission for expenditure out of our asset forfeiture.
I move to authorize the sheriff's department to uh use, make a submission to the turn of justice for uh use of. Approximately some eighty six hundred dollars um for to for the purchase of a drone through the uh asset forfeiture.
Done.
Any further discussion? Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Cherichello?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
Vote for adjournment.
We're approved. Motion to adjourn.
Do you need? Major, do you need anything else, or that's sufficient?
Nope, that that'll satisfy as long as we know that's occurred, because I don't, I don't think that page. I don't know if we, if we can get the signature page as quickly as we can, but I can affirm to the DOJ that uh the time and place for the approvals have occurred.
We don't have that yet, though.
I don't think there was, yeah, so I don't think there's, I think I just have to sign off saying that it has occurred.
Okay, so there was a motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have a second. All those in favor?
All right.
All right, okay, we are in adjournment. Thank you very much.
So this is where I hit stop and. Do I have to hit stop first? Wait, can you, you're on mute.
Sorry.
Edit my, edit the other bit. Do I hit stop?
Yes, yeah, hit stop on the record.
Okay.